Let's call to order the Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 Planning Commission. Ms. G., can you please call the roll?
For your big turnout.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner is absent. Mr. Rankin is absent. Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
And Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. I understand we have a change to the agenda.
Yes, please. I received an email from someone who spoke at this January 16th public hearing, and they were not satisfied with the way I had transcribed their comments. And so they sent me a letter and asked that it be put in verbatim, and I have not yet finished that process. So I'm asking that we delay the approval of the January 16 minutes until our next meeting.
Okay. Do I need a motion to do that?
I think you could do a voice vote.
Okay. On a voice vote, all those in favor of delaying the January 16, 2018 minutes until next week, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Hearing it pass unanimously, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's short agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right. Old business. We are back to the CIP for our third week in a row.
Thank you, Chair. Deputy City Manager Cindy Mester is here to review the staff report and provide any necessary information for the items.
Thank you. You do have the memo that was in your packet that summarizes the actions and meetings of the Planning Commission, and I do thank you on behalf of myself and the staff for the attention to the CIP. It's large and didn't have, as you all discussed, a whole lot of flexibility, but it is important for the infrastructure going forward. The motion that's presented in the box, starting at line three, is, as you saw with the draft memo of last week's work session, with one minor editing I wanted to call the commission's attention to, which is under item number four for the justifications. The item talked about compliance with policy but didn't have, in the draft of last week, a reference to the pending amendments. So I wanted to have that text clarified so it was clear that the Planning Commission acknowledged that the current policies aren't in compliance, but that that effort is underway. With that, the memo and the staff report is, as you saw it in the draft last week, and I've made no changes to the CIP since our last discussion in your direction. So the recommendation before the commission tonight is to adopt the CIP with these six justifications as presented on February 5th and 12th.
Thank you. I plan on making no adjustments to the motion. Does anyone have comments?
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of probably questions. On the justifications, is it accurate to say that only the first one is, kind of falls under our statutory obligation, and that numbers two through six are kind of extra for opinions or, you know, additional things that aren't necessarily part of what our official criteria would be for reviewing the CIP?
I would say one is definitely under your formal purview, under state code and city charter, but I also would say that four is as well in terms of the financial, because both the city code and charter speaks to the commission's role in terms of financial sustainability and affordability of the CIP.
Right.
The others are definitely consistent themes that the commission has put forth as reasons to support the CIP that you're adopting, but one and four would be statutory.
Okay. Well, I guess the concern I had with number four, and we talked about this a little bit during our work session, is that, you know, my preference would have been that the city still stayed with the modified CIP to stretch out some of the projects so that they would be timed to coincide with the results of the financial performance of the 10 acres. Otherwise, we're putting, in my view, an awful lot of risk as far as having all of the expenditures, but not necessarily all of the revenues to offset those. I mean, as a pragmatic matter, we, I mean, the horse is out of the barn. There's really no way we could do that. But I guess my second thought was going to be that if we didn't have to put four in, that I would have suggested that. But if you're saying that it is a statutory requirement, that it has to be there, then I guess there's no way around that.
Well, Chair, if I could clarify in response?
Absolutely.
Under tab one, which you all don't have, all of the notebooks in front of you, 1-14, does speak to the code where you need to look at the financial components of this. The justifications as laid out are your choice of wording. So the justifications do not require that you have that financial statement in there. This is the basis of which last year's motion was, so I included the same justifications. But the commissioners can modify those as you desire. Ultimately, you do need complan, compliance and financial compliance, but how you document your motion to approve could be modified.
Well, I don't know if I stand alone in that, holding to that point of view, or if others here continue to share, since we did support the modified CIP last year. In other words, what I would be hesitant to having happen is, the city council kind of voted basically to do all the projects. And it just strikes me that if we include this justification the way it is, that it would appear then that we no longer adhere to what we voted on last year, and that we're okay also with moving ahead with all the projects without timing some of them where possible to match the financial performance of the 10 acres.
Well, you know, I agreed with the modified CIP as well strongly. I thought it made a lot more sense to bring down our debt a little bit and put off some of the projects, you know, the library project. But the library project was, a lot of people came in in support of going forward with it, so I understand why the board went with the full CIP.
Right.
I mean, I'm okay if we want to drop number four out of it, not because I don't think this is part of our responsibility, because our charter certainly says it is, but if we don't feel comfortable. But I have to say, since that vote, I've seen several different presentations by the financial side of it, and I feel confident that our city staff has a handle on what we have going on right now with the full CIP.
Right.
So I feel more confident than I did last year.
Yeah. Yeah. I just kind of feel like last year was last year, and we definitely, you know, put that in, but this year is this year. And so without going back to recommending other things, to go back to a different form of CIP, I don't see where that would make much sense in that case, in my, just in my opinion.
Okay.
You know, this is a new CIP, so therefore, we're saying that as far as we're concerned, you know, the council voted on everything last year that's going forth in this one, and so we're working with what we've got right here. But I can understand how you might really feel, you know, objections, but I don't think we should leave it out.
Well, it's a nuanced issue, and like I say, if I'm the only one that kind of feels that way, it's not an important enough issue for me to go through the process of making a motion to remove it, but I wanted to hear what my colleagues thought about that.
Ms. Mester, when it says the CIP is fiscally responsive, what do we mean by responsive in terms of, I mean, it's not, it's a different word than responsible.
Yeah.
What is the intent of that word?
Based on past conversations and my perspective, it is intended to be responsive and not responsible or compliant, because it does take some additional council action. So the CIP, with the financial projections and plans, mending the financial policies, doing the Sixth Sense debt tax increase that was modeled, doing the capital reserves and responsive to the two voter referendums for the library and the schools, which the school one happened after your last CIP vote. All of those, in my mind, is what I'm meaning, is it's responsive to those fiscal constraints and challenges.
To all those actions and other things.
Yeah. So if the policy isn't amended, or the projections based on which the CIP is presented to you, because it is modeling the Sixth Sense tax increase, otherwise it doesn't come back into compliance. So that's where I was thinking responsive.
Okay. So, and is there a word missing? It says the CIP is fiscally responsive and compliant. Is it?
In compliance.
In compliance?
It's probably compliant or in compliance, if you're correct, whichever you're.
But is it, it's not compliant, it's only compliant in the context of pending amendment?
Right.
Yeah.
Which, so that makes, it does make more sense that you edited it and added the adopted financial policy in the context of pending amendment.
Mm-hmm.
I guess another way we could say it's fiscally responsive is that one of the things that we have lamented and talked about is that we don't really have a lot of room to change things in here, and that we're heavily dependent on grants for most of the stuff that's in here, especially the transportation side. So it's responsive to our situation in that we're really dependent on grants right now for most of our CIP.
Yeah, I'm not interested in taking it out personally, but if you wanted to say something that softened it, you could say the CIP is responsive to the fiscal reality and in compliance with adopted. So it's sort of saying this is what the situation we're dealing with, because I tend to agree with Ms. Hockenberry, that last year was last year, and we're now, these are the facts we have to deal with this year. If you think that would make you feel, like saying, we've got these facts, it's not what I wish, but in light of that.
I think that's fine. That would at least give us some room to discuss this, if, should we, should we need One other change I would suggest is in number five, where it says the CIP must address. I would suggest changing that to should, because I assume what we're saying here is that we think that city council should fund some more, should provide additional funding in the pay-as-you-go category.
So why the change between must and should? Because that's a little bit of wordsmithing to me.
Well, whether or not it must, I mean, that.
It has to.
Well, that's, that's if we want. If we want, as a policy matter, we want it to do that.
Well, I think we do, actually. I mean, we really do need long-term sustainable funding for pay-as-you-go for a lot of the big projects that are in the future.
Right, right.
Or we're talking about, like, our problem with paving. We don't have enough funds for paving.
Right, but it would be city council.
Which is a major problem.
City council that actually decides.
Right, right.
Okay.
So our role here is just advisory, right? So.
Well, I would just say, as the body that is really responsible for putting a CIP that then both the staff and us were presenting that to the board, I think we must, it's something we could say, because if we don't deal with it, we're going to continue to have major holes in our CIP.
Right, right.
And we're going to continue to fall behind in maintenance and infrastructure. So I think it's, I think we can say must, because we're, you know, we're responsible for trying to make sure that our CIP needs are covered.
Absolutely. Should is kind of.
Yeah. That's why I'm like, it's not that much of a difference in the world, word either, so I'm not sure what, why we would change it.
I like must better.
Okay.
Okay.
This will be your recommendation to council via the city manager's proposed budget.
Right.
If I could interrupt just for a moment, what I'm hearing at the table is a desire to keep that word must, but also an understanding of sort of why the word must is being used. Is it satisfactory to the commission to simply move the closing clause that begins "to provide for fiscal balance of cash and debt financing" to the front of that statement?
That would put more emphasis on it.
I think that maintains the word must, but also explains the origin of it.
But that does interrupt the written.
Yeah.
The CIP, the CIP is.
It doesn't have to flow. It's not thereas.
It has flow.
We don't have to have thereas, and thereas, and thereas, you know.
All right. Well, those are the only changes. If nothing else, I wanted to prove that I did read this.
Good job.
And think, read and think.
But that was a really good discussion about, you know, where we're at with this. We're at what we've got to deal with now. We're not dealing with last year. And the fact is that we really need to have that long-term money. It has to be, you know? This is a direction, direction to the council.
Okay. Well, I had one other, just quick comment. This is just more by way of information sharing, and I had a discussion with Ms. Mester about the issue of whether or not it would be appropriate to request that the CIP include something to deal with the possibility of a solar system on one of our schools down the road. And as we discussed it, and I explained that now, nowadays, the way these solar systems are financed is through something called a power purchase agreement, where we neither own it or have to put up capital money upfront. It's paid out as an expense item out of the existing budget. So with that information, her recommendation was that it did not need to be in the CIP, which I'm very comfortable with, but I did want to at least mention it, that this is, you know, something that we thought about, and when the time is appropriate, you know, we can, we can bring that back for discussion.
That would be in the operating budget.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's all I had.
Good thinking, though.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stevens, do you want to make the change as suggested by Mr. Stoddard, or you're okay that it addresses it sufficiently at five? I mean, I think we're both, well, I'm open to the change he proposed, or do you not think it's necessary?
Well, I would be.
I would like to keep the word must there, but as well, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy with the change, but I can go with it the other way, too. So it's not, not a critical issue for me to vote on.
I think the restructuring of the sentence that way does make a point.
Puts emphasis.
Yeah.
Puts emphasis on it.
Okay.
Okay.
And we did all this talking, so we should change something.
And is number four changing as well? I think, Chair, you proposed some provisions.
I think so.
That was just to add in, well, after and, in compliance, instead of just compliance, for one thing.
No, I think it was the same.
And responsive to the current fiscal reality, right?
The CIP is responsive to the fiscal realities and in compliance with.
Right, right.
Adopted financial policies.
Which is what it is.
Responsive to current fiscal reality?
Right.
I said current.
Okay.
And with those policies that we have right now. You going to do this, Melissa?
If I may, Mr. Chair, this was advertised as public hearing. Now would be a.
Time for public.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments before we open it to the public? All right. I'm now opening this to the public for their comment. Would you wish to speak on behalf of the CIP? No?
You want to speak publicly at another moment?
At another moment, okay.
So we, they probably should have been during the petition.
Yeah, they probably should have. I will circle back. All right, then I'm going to close it to the public, and I will, if there are no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
You want me to do the motion?
Yeah, you read so well.
Okay. I should, and I should have downloaded it on my thing, and I did not. Oh, okay, well, that's even better. That's better than reading off my phone. I didn't think about downloading. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve pursuant to Section 6.19 of the city charter and Section 17.08 of the city code, the FY 2019-2024 Capital Improvements Program CIP, as presented on February 5th and 12th, 2018, as summarized on CIP notebook pages 3-1, 3-2, 3-3, 3-4, 3-5, 3-6, and 3-7, based on the following justification. One, the CIP is consistent with the adopted comprehensive small area and master plans. Two, the CIP approaches the citywide capital infrastructure and reinvestment needs in a holistic manner. Three, the CIP is enhanced through purposely planned and balanced reinvestment needs, funding options, and staff resources. Four, let's see, the CIP is responsive to the current fiscal reality and in compliance with adopted financial policies in context of pending amendment for large debt issuance. And five.
That one's complicated. It was like three, four, and four, I think.
Yeah, which is like, yeah. To provide for fiscal balance of cash and debt financing, the CIP must address long-term dedicated and sustainable funding for pay-as-you-go, local funding for facility reinvestment, and other capital needs. And six, the CIP provides sufficient match funding to leverage grants to address significant transportation needs.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comment before we?
That's my power.
Take a vote on it? All right. Ms. G., can you take a roll call vote on this?
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin, I'm sorry. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes unanimously, 4 to 0. All right. Before we move on to the next item of business, I was remiss and forgot to do the receipt of petitions. Have you received any?
I have none.
You have none. If you'd like to speak on some topic, you may do so now. Just please state your name and address, and.
I'm Corey Weiss, 603 Nullwood Drive. I'm the chair of the Environmental Sustainability Council.
And I'm Dennis Semansky, 915 Hillwood Avenue, and I'm the chair of the Tree Commission.
I'd like to talk to you about a couple of things this evening. First, I just wanted to let the Planning Commission know that on Thursday of last week, the Environmental Sustainability Council had a panel discussion called Sustainable and Resilient West Falls Church Economic Development Project. And I want to thank Mr. Stevens and Ms. Hockenberry for attending. We had a great panel discussion with six really phenomenal panelists and about forty-some people from the community, so it was very well attended. The subject of the event was really to take a look at how, as we develop this really once-in-a-generation opportunity for the city of Falls Church, how we can do so in a way that is sustainable, meaning, you know, minimizing environmental risk and maximizing environmental benefit and social benefit, and resilient. So is it ready for the future? Ready is particularly for the impacts of climate change that experts are predicting that this region will see. So I just wanted to share a few key outputs from that event, or a few key takeaways. The first is that, you know, Washington DC has prepared a climate-ready DC plan. They've done some very detailed analysis on the increases in temperature, increases in precipitation, increases in severe weather events that will happen in this region. We don't need to start from scratch. We can lean on the work that our larger neighbor to the east has done and rely on those projections. And there's also some pretty sound actions that they're starting to take already to ready their buildings and their communities for the effects of climate change. And we got some great insights from architects on that panel and from the Washington DC folks on how to think about that. We heard from one of the developers that lead is a slam dunk, that nothing to be feared. We heard one panelist talk about the economic value that open space creates for neighborhoods, which was really inspiring. We heard about the importance of managing stormwater, particularly in a place like, a site like this, which is elevated. There are innovative things that can be done with green infrastructure, you know, tree canopy, sustainable landscaping. And we really heard upfront that if you set your goals upfront, and we heard the same message from our Green Schools panel back in October, if you set your goals, your sustainability goals upfront, these goals can be managed. It's much easier to set the goals, environmental goals, social goals at the beginning, rather than try to tackle them on at the end. One of the last key points is that community engagement is essential. One of the developers, the president of Urban Atlantic Development, talked about 300-plus meetings that she attended. Oh, is this it? I'm sorry. Did you just say down the hall? Okay, that was down the hall. I thought you were giving me the, cutting me off.
Oh, no.
[laughing].
He was looking very.
That's not my role.
I just realized I was speaking for too long. And it, community engagement is essential. We heard about the developer at the Walter Reed project, who's been to 300-plus community meetings, so, and she talked about how valuable that is to a project. We'll write up a summary of the event, we'll circulate it, we'll post presenters' presentations on the ESC website, but I just wanted to share that it was a really great event, and I think very thought-provoking for a number of people. In the very short term, the ESC wanted to take the results or the thinking from that panel and apply them to the draft RFP that city council will soon be voting on for the West Falls Church project. So in conjunction with the Tree Commission, we have provided some draft edits. We reviewed them with select other folks from boards and commissions, particularly folks who came to the panel discussion to get their input, and we submitted those to city council today. I will share those with the Planning Commission broadly. I shared those with the two members who attended to the resilient, the panel discussion. And the key gist of the edits is that we'd like to ensure that this project has sustainability goals, sustainable energy, tree canopy, green space, stormwater goals integrated at the front, and that this project is really thinking about and preparing for the impacts of climate change that are likely to come, so we don't have to pay for this twice, or so that this massive new asset for the city is at risk. So I just wanted to update you about that, and Dennis, do you have anything to add? Take any questions if anybody has them.
I don't have any.
Okay.
All right.
May I ask one?
Yeah.
Are you going to be taking, you said you were going to, of course, take it to the city council, but I would like to ask you to take it in front of the school board, because there wasn't much of a representation in the schools, and there was so much in there that is pertinent, and I thought, you know, just as a comment, it was one of the best panels I've ever heard. It was just really, really exciting, and just, I think we were energized, and as I wrote to you, I think they re-energized themselves, talking around each other. They were feeding off of each other, and just, they were all getting just environmentally very excited.
I'll reinforce that the, it was a very worthwhile and informative session, and what I was impressed with was how excited the speakers were when they had all of the details to share about how they made these various projects that they discussed, not only in terms of the fiscal or economic, but just how it dealt with people and the environment, and how important that is to make it a special place, that if you look at it just strictly from the economic standpoint, it's not going to be nearly as exciting as it is when you look at the broader issues. So that really was communicated very effectively, I thought, by the speakers.
And they did make a video, and I thought some of the questions and the way they covered the answers to those questions were just as informative as what they were telling us to begin with. And I thought that, you know, practically what, an hour, and of answering questions. Not only were the, it was the panel really good, but I noticed there were a lot of other individuals sitting around the room who were not City of Falls Church people, who were representing companies that worked with these panelists up there, particularly the one for the Walter Reed with the energy. He was sitting kind of off to the side of me, but there were about four or five of them there, and I thought that was really impressive. And I think that the number of people that showed up probably impressed them a little bit, too, I hope, you know.
Lyndy said something that reminded me. I wanted you to be aware that the Tree Commission and the ESC jointly submitted similar requirements to Dr. Noonan and the school board for inclusion in their RFP, and they were very accommodating in taking those requirements and putting them in their graph.
Well, as someone who was on that committee making the decision about the finalists, I can say, having read these proposals in depth, it's a major part of all the finalist proposals. So it was definitely incorporated in the school part of it and was listened to by those who are going to be responding ultimately. So it seems very, very likely that that'll be a big component of their proposal. It was front and center, and one of the major discussion points of that. And the committee on the 10 acres is meeting this Friday morning, and I think it'll be a topic, I don't know that the, I have the agenda, but from my understanding, that topic will also be part of what we discuss on Friday morning. That's the kickoff for this committee, the coordination.
A 7:30 AM meeting?
Yes.
It is, on Friday morning.
I may pass.
That's fine. And I've received the comments, Mr. Stevens forwarded them to me, so I have them from.
Great.
The edits to the.
Let us know when the video is ready too, because there'll be bits and pieces that would be extremely valuable.
Yeah, well, we're working in an IT situation.
Of course.
We'll do our best to, we'll let you know. And I guess if you, you know, if anybody on the Planning Commission has any questions on our edits or what we're trying to achieve, we're certainly, you know, more than welcome conversation and would, of course, welcome any support that the Planning Commission can provide for the objectives.
And I would think that anyone, any developers come in and reply into our RFPs are going to do the basic stuff. I mean, there are no schools being built in this area that have been built in this area recently that are not LEED at some level, that don't have certain things. I think really for us is can we push the envelope a little bit?
A lot.
You know? It's like you can look at TC Williams, and they had quite a bit of little sustainable stuff in it, but not, it's not like cutting edge. So it's like, you know, how far can we go? How much can we push? And it's the same thing with the office building, like, and projects coming up like at Broad and Washington, and hopefully we'll have, maybe have some office up on the 10 Acres. I mean, you don't build office now unless you build it energy-efficient, and usually it's enough points to get the basic LEED. So the fact is, we'd like to see more. And so that's really the issue. Can we push for a little bit further down? Because I don't think, like, you know, Mr. Wodisca said, everything that came in already is talking about this, because it's just normal for this area.
But I think they're requesting gold.
Yeah. Well, I know, but I'm just saying, like, a lot of this is very normal. Even gold's starting to become normal.
Right.
You know? And there was a time where there was only like a couple platinum buildings in the whole country, and they, weirdly, they were both in Little Rock, Arkansas. It was the only place where two platinum buildings were located together. And so it's just odd what can happen. But I mean, it's a different world now.
A piece that's kind of unique about our 10 Acres is that we do have the opportunity to look at it on an integrated basis, to plan for the whole site, not just, you know, individual buildings, which of course, as you say, we do, and I think are getting more successful as we go along. This is really rare, because you get a whole neighborhood to plan, and that's really what the speakers at this forum addressed, is how they looked at the site as a whole and did the planning from an environmental standpoint as a whole. And so I think that's where the push would come for our folks, is to see if there's some elements that are appropriate for the scale and size of our city that could apply to that whole site and not just individual buildings.
Yeah, I think the struggle for us is 10 Acres really isn't that much. And so, you know, in terms of open space, and we also know that, I mean, we have even less room on the school side with the fields, which are kind of open space, but they really aren't, because we're talking about artificial turf and we're talking about compacted grass. So, you know, we have, that's really our struggle, and it often is, we just don't have enough land.
So if you indulge me a few more minutes, I wanted to talk to you about Tree City USA signage.
Okay. We have a very light agenda, so I will certainly hear you out.
So since the '70s, the Tree City USA program has been a nationwide movement to green up cities and towns across America. More than 3,400 communities have participated and made the commitment, made the commitment to become a Tree City USA. They have to meet four standards, have a Tree City, or an ordinance, an urban forestry ordinance, have a tree department, or in our case, commission, spend at least $2 per capita on the tree program, and to celebrate Arbor Day. So Falls Church at one time had Tree City USA signage in two places in the city, on South Washington Street, near Welcome Drive, and up by me on East Broad Street, by Seven Corners. But they're no longer there. So going forward, what I'm looking for tonight is your concurrence with the recommendation to put Tree City USA signage in our city parks, starting with Cherry Hill. Talked with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and Danny Schlitt, talked to the Village Society, and certainly the arborist is part of, has been part of this discussion. This Arbor Day will be the 40th celebration of Arbor Day, recognition of Arbor Day in the city of Falls Church. And I'm hoping that we can make it happen to make that part of our Arbor Day ceremony this year.
Why did the other signs come down?
It's one of those things, Russ, nobody seems to know.
I think the South Washington probably came down when they had to take out a bunch of trees that were coming up, they were dying, and then they came in and redit. Well, it was funny. Well, they were not good trees. They were not native trees. They weren't appropriate for where they were. So they took them out and put natives back in, and those trees actually are doing very, very well. And I think that in the re-landscaping, to put new trees in, the sign was removed. And who knows? It'd been there for a while. Maybe it was no longer, maybe it wasn't sound anymore. Maybe it was rotted.
And then there are all those banners down there now, so.
Yeah, so then, so then it probably didn't go back, is what I think happened in that one. But, you know, I think it's a great idea to put them in the parks too, because I don't, we have a lot of signs on our streets. I don't know if people really look at them, but the parks are where people are usually walking, and they pay more attention to it. So I think that's a great idea to put them there. And I guess the question always is, is who's going to pay for it? And, you know, what, if Parks and Rec is good with it, then who else needs to say yes to that?
Well, we've already, we've already briefed council.
Right.
City manager is aware of it, Cindy Mester, the deputy city managers, we've engaged during, in the discussion all along. Nobody has asked that question. So I'm just amassing concurrences, and sure, go ahead. And at some point, we'll have a critical mass.
Yeah, because I don't think, that's why I just asked, because I know, like, business signage has a certain, you know, where it has to go. We all know that. But, I mean, as far as I know, like, when we changed out all the park signs, I don't think anyone really had to concur with that, except for Parks and Rec and the park staff. So I think that that's something that could just happen, I guess.
I'd rather err on the side of caution.
Right.
And to answer your question about, we already have one sign. And Kate, the arborist, seems pretty confident that we can fabricate more.
Okay, good. So, that she can put it in her budget? Okay.
Awesome.
So you're not asking us to take action, just to sort of agree that this is a good idea?
Yes, sir.
Just sit there and check our heads.
Sounds good, I agree with you.
An informal resolution of sorts that we agree.
So I wonder, like, I think some of the parks have the wildlife habitat signs. So maybe it's something that could be placed near those, or even, you know, one thing about it is you don't want to have too many crowded signage. I don't know, that's something that could be on the same poll, or, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Baby steps.
Okay, baby steps. Well, that's why I don't want to get into it. I just, I'm on the VEPIS board, and so is Dennis, and we get into long and thin, and well, Tim, you haven't been there during the signage discussion yet, so don't worry. But we had one of, we stopped, we haven't had a hard one in a couple of years.
Wow, anticipation.
And I'm happy to avoid one.
Because as you guys know, the, or you may not know, VEPIS pays for the Victorian signs that say you're entering the city of Falls Church. And so there are a lot of people who would like to get rid of Victorian signs and get something flashier.
Oh, well.
But VEPIS paid for those signs, and I guess if someone wants something flashier, they will have to pay for their own flashier sign.
So in that respect, tree signs are a lot less controversial?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know, we didn't advertise this as a discussion, like, I don't think we can take action. But, so, I'll speak for myself personally. I'm fully supportive of it, and I think it's a great idea, not knowing the details of where it would go and how the signs would get made, but in terms of an idea, I think it's a wonderful thing, and we should, we should increase the, we're already one of the 3,400, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we should, we've already gone through those steps, but we should increase the awareness.
Awareness.
Solid.
So we're like in 34, 35 years of getting that Tree City now, right?
Yeah.
Like, it's in the 30s, the number of years straight that we've had it.
Right.
Yeah. So, no, I think you should, I think we should definitely go for it with the signs. And if someone can cover the budget and fabricate them, and Parks and Rec is good and Danny's good, then we should put them in there.
So informally, no objections?
None.
I support the signs. I'll go on record.
If I could, Mr. Chair, when the Parks for People Plan, which is the Parks and Open Space Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan was going through, one of the first real enthusiasts, I think, for that plan update was the Historical Commission. And they talked about the parks as a place to tell the story of the city. And I think certainly being a Tree City USA is part of the story of the city. So if that's something that the city's proud of, I think it makes sense to say that in a public space, that I think there are a lot of good things that the city does, and it's very hard to know about them. So the more we can, we can talk up the good things that the city's doing, I think the more people will understand what is the brand of the city and what does Falls Church mean. That the city of Falls Church is its own unique entity in Northern Virginia, and that's a lot of what the visioning effort was about, talking about the city as being a special place. I think the Tree City USA program is part of what makes that happen. And so I think telling that story in the parks and inviting people to experience Falls Church and why it is unique within Northern Virginia, I think that's, I think that's important.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Absolutely.
Thank you both.
I had one other modest follow-up on the, on the forum.
On the what?
On the forum, and the updates, edits to the draft RFP that the city issued and is going to issue in final form in another week or so. The number of edits are quite extensive, and obviously, we have not considered that. And I don't suggest or recommend that we say anything with respect to the detail of the edits, but it strikes me that it might be possible for us to make a very kind of general statement that the draft, as it was, as it existed at least on the 11th, which is when it was made public, could use some enhancement in the area of sustainability and that we simply remark that we agree with that and not get into specifics. This would just, I propose this as a letter from you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Epstein and copy to City Council.
I personally have no problem with this, but I am reluctant to represent the Planning Commission without discussion here. Melissa, have you looked at this? Are you supportive of this? I mean, I'm happy to sign that letter. It's.
Very high level.
It's, I mean, we support it. I mean, the committee hasn't even gotten kicked off until Friday.
I kind of feel like it's so high level, I'm not sure if it's useful. You know, maybe refer, I think if we were going to do something like this, I think we wanted to, all of us, look at the draft additions that were made by ESC and support them directly, because.
Problem is, we're not going to have time to do that.
Yeah, okay.
This is a fast-moving effort.
Okay.
And they're going to go out.
Well, I mean, I agree with the statement. I just think that we're very vague, but maybe a vague statement's better than no statement. So I'll go with that.
Right. If nothing else, it makes the observation that as good as that document is, and I think there's a lot of very well-stated components to it, it is kind of weak on sustainability. And somebody can hopefully go through and add a few key words, phrases, pick up as many of the recommended edits as the ESC and other folks who participated in that effort have suggested.
Well, I guess I would say that if I was going to send, if I was Mr. Wodisca, I would feel like I need a little bit more than this one paragraph, because otherwise it just is like a vague statement of saying you should need to add more. So like, this last sentence could be on its own, and maybe we could at least add a sentence or two about what type of sustainability goals we're talking about. Like, like, so like, we're saying that we express the importance of sustainability goals, goals that we thought, or, you know, goals include in, I don't know, generating onsite power, or, you know what I mean? Just like, like, come up with like.
Well, there's certainly some topic areas that could be added. That's.
Right.
Easy thing to do. I think the question is, how much time do we think we want to spend on the letter? What's staying in our lane mean?
I guess what I'm, I'm just suggesting a minor edit in that we make the last sentence on its own, so it's at least two paragraphs.
Mm-hmm.
And that we add a sentence after sustainability goals that just outlay at least the top, like, five things.
I can easily do that.
Yeah, even in general terms, I think the importance of having open space within the project, the importance of, you know.
Well, there's, there's a number of categories.
Energy efficiency.
Stormwater, energy efficiency.
Stormwater.
Renewable energy, tree canopy, open space.
That whole list, that.
But you know what? Actually, I would say that stuff is like, that is like the key stuff. Some of the stuff I'm most important with is types of materials used.
Mm-hmm.
Use of sustainable materials. I think that's the one that's left behind. It's easy to do energy efficiency. It's easy to do stormwater. It's really, literally, like I said, those are common. No one builds anything now without energy efficiencies and sustainability of, you know, on stormwater. But to me, it's like materials is something that's left out, open space is left out, canopy is often left out. Those are the big things.
Well, I'm certainly open to doing that if there's agreement that a letter is appropriate and it could be filled out.
It can only help to have one more voice out there saying something, saying you need to make, because I, you know, I always remember MEH and how badly that went.
Well.
And I just don't, I do not want that to happen again. So, you know, and I think that was one of the points that Cory Weiss made just now, that set the goals at the beginning, so I think it's important that we do this. But yeah, I would just, I just think we need to flesh it out just a little bit, even if we just put some headlines. Here are the big goals that we need to make sure are in here.
What if I do that, send it to you, and if you're okay, we'll send it to Chair Wodisca and CP is comfortable with it.
Or send it to Deborah, and she can send it to all of us.
Okay.
And then, and then people individually send you comments, and that way we get around our rules. But, which is what we're trying to do here.
We'll be in compliance.
I know. Well, you know, it's, it's, it's not that you want to get around them, it's you want to try to get work done. But, but if Deborah sends it out, and then, I think, I'm just saying, like I said, it just needs one or two sentences that flesh out some major, I'm just looking for major areas.
Yeah, no, I understand your recommendation.
She's got a good list.
And I think it makes sense, and it's easy to put that in. I could have it.
And I think it would be easier to read broken up that way, because the first sentence is a doozy. It takes you, you have to read it twice to be like, oh, okay.
Well, it's because of the title of the RFP.
Right, no, no, it's not your fault. It's the title, but for a moment, you're just like, what?
Right. It reads like a staff memo on a proposed motion, right?
Right, exactly. And that's why it takes you a moment. And that's why I think, like, once they get through that sentence, if we had a clearer, smaller sentence that says, here are the major goal areas that we'd like to make sure are included in this, but in better words than that.
Right. Well, if you're both okay with that.
I also just think two paragraphs looks better.
Have fun.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay.
Okay.
With this discussion, and give me a more complete letter. I will sign it and send it off.
Yeah.
I'll hand-deliver it on Friday. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, that's cool.
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We did go a little bit of out of order. We're now to approval of minutes. We are deferring action on the January 16th. Do you have any comments on the February 5th meeting?
I did not.
I don't either.
I don't.
Okay.
One second.
All right.
Sorry.
We all ran them.
I thought I had one. I can't remember if it was on the 16th or it was on the.
Yeah, mine's on the 16th.
Mine's on the 16th. Mine's on the 16th.
Yeah, I have fingers on the 16th, but I will email them to you, Deborah, since you're going to add to them anyway. And that, it'll be easier to email it to you.
Okay, I'll do that too.
Than to hand-write it right now.
I just want to be deleted.
Yes, I have a comment. On line 290.
And this is the 5th of February?
It's the 5th of February.
All right, 290.
It says, Chair Wadiska stated that this type of proposal is not popular and is not favored by the Planning Commission. I thought I was saying it is not favored by the Planning Commission. I don't think I was commenting on its popularity. So I wanted to say that this type of proposal is not favored by the Planning Commission. That was my intended, the comment.
Yeah, but all those types of things.
Oh, and then on line 430, it says Chair Wadiska was pleased that there is a buyer available for the new homes. And then it says, and, I think that word should be yet, expressed his desire for Forest Drive Way. That was more, the first line was more pleasantries than anything. All right, that's all.
Any others?
No.
All right. Can I then get a motion to accept these as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Everybody said aye, no abstentions. All right. Any Planning Commission reports? Other than the meeting, panel meeting on the environmental services.
Yeah, it's only a week ago that we met, right?
Just from Parks and Rec, they're going to be working on the Larry Graves Field quite soon. And there, I know there is some concern about staff and public parking over for the 400 building that might, as soon as Madison Park gets going, you know, with their programs over there, that's going to be a problem. And they did talk about signs a lot, mainly that they don't want sign pollution in any of the parks, you know, just not too many. Now, like, they're also working on, the lia, student liaisons are working on a no-smoking type of thing, because it's, you can't just say, can't do it, but just not to do it, but they've got some good ideas, so they're working on that. So they're moving on that type of thing. And that's it.
As I sort of alluded to in that last discussion, not as a member of the Planning Commission, but just as a member of the community, I was asked to be on the evaluation committee for the proposals of the new high school. We received five. I was pleased with all of the submissions that were quite comprehensive. I'm not sure what's public and what's not, so just in very vague terms, I was very pleased. And the environmental piece was front and center for all five of them, really, but ultimately, we chose three. I don't know if they've been announced yet, so-
They haven't, they won't until after their meeting.
But there were some that were really up front about that.
About what the-
The environmental stuff.
Yes. But the process was very good, and the committee came to a decision, and I was very pleased with what is being proposed at this point. I think there's a lot online about what those five proposals are. And at some point, I assume, very, in the very near term, the decision will be announced.
We've got a timeline somewhere on it.
Yeah, no, we had, if we had not made a decision at that meeting a week and a half ago, we were going to meet again this past Thursday, but we did not need it, since we were able to come to a decision in one fairly short meeting, two hours or so.
Wow.
And the next, and the design RFP, I gather, is in queue for being issued here fairly shortly.
Yeah. And then on Friday, that is as part of the Planning Commission and the member of this coordinating committee, I think is what it's called, on the 10-acre development.
Are they noticing that anywhere?
I think so.
It's on the city's website.
You can get notice off the site. Like, I get notices of any of these types of meetings.
Yeah, I've got all those before. I haven't seen this one.
And once you start going, then you get the notices.
Yeah, because, you know, when I'm free, I would love to sit there and listen.
I don't know, I'm asleep at 7:40. I don't wake up till 7:45.
The first one is this Friday.
Yeah.
It's called the Campus Coordinating Committee.
I think I've been to just about all of them so far, so I'll try to continue to attend the ones going forward.
So you're getting notices?
I am, yeah.
These are not good means for night people.
What I could do is just share them whenever I get them.
That would be nice.
Happy to do that.
You know, I feel left out if I don't know about a meeting.
Well, I do get them, though.
Well, here's the, here's the public notice.
Yeah.
Not that, whoever's, but there was a public notice, and it was forwarded to me personally by somebody, but there must be a public notice of some.
Well, those notices go up on the building boards in City Hall. But I do get, like, you know how you get those automatic notices to meetings? I get one for that.
Always have.
I've noticed that it, sometimes it's only a few days out.
Yeah, they're not long-term notices.
Yeah.
And they used to decide on them when it was the working group at the last minute.
Yeah.
So these may be a little bit more formal, so.
Right. Well, they, you know, they're technically supposed to have them posted on those building boards a week out.
They say as one, the fourth agenda item is the school RFP update, the down selection, so maybe they mention it at that meeting.
Melissa, I'm not sure for this project, but generally speaking, boards and commission postings have to be done at least three calendar days in advance.
Oh, three calendar days? I thought it was a week, that's why I thought, okay. I don't know, we have a lot of different rules. I know things have to be like, in papers at different period of time, too, so.
It's going to be at the 800 West Broad Street.
Well, maybe that's why they get it three days out a lot of times.
All right, that's it. Any other comments before we move to the Plan Director? Mr. Stotter?
Limited reports this week that the move into 400 North Washington has been mostly successful. We've still got a few computer glitches, but for the most part, the group is up and running. It's a nicer space than I think people had originally thought, looking at the floor plans. There is quite a bit of natural light coming in through the windows, so it is a pleasant place to get our work done. So that is going well. As you may have noticed, we're still ironing out some of the procedures for getting evening meetings up and running. We've had a bit of a struggle getting the online postings through Granicus working as smoothly as we'd like, obviously with the equipment, which FCC TV was fantastic, jumping into the breach and providing for us. We're not running in the same system that we're used to, so if you'll pardon the dust while we move through these temporary spaces, I think we'll learn the mechanics for each room that we have to use, and each subsequent meeting should run smoother. But otherwise, I think we're doing pretty well. I think we are trying to keep, as a planning group, our items on schedule in terms of development review as well as long-term planning. On that note, there was a positive retreat with the City Council on their, on the development of their new two-year work program. That'll be going to, it was a well-attended event. It was all seven of the City Council members, about 25 other members of boards and commissions, as well as senior staff participated in a number of exercises.
We had about three members there.
Yeah, we had three.
A number of exercises where the groups, the participants were spread into very small working groups, and they talked about what personally connected them to the city, the major issues facing the city right now, what are the major milestones that could be achieved over the next two years, and then council worked to prioritize some of those things and collect them into themes or buckets. So that'll be, that work will be moving forward in the ultimate culmination of a two-year work program for council at the end of March. So they'll have their first work session scheduled for March 5th, second work session 14 days later, March 14th, and then action seven days later on the 26th. That'll, and that'll wrap up the formation of the work plan, but obviously, that'll be the starting point for actually getting the work done. That coincides well with the Planning Commission's own retreat date of March 19, because there will be a sense of where council is headed on their two-year priorities, and I think that's an excellent opportunity to talk about what are the Planning Commission's priorities, where are those things in alignment, and where can various items move forward. Already in review, I've got a hat in both rings, obviously, as the facilitator for the council work plan, but also as the liaison to the Planning Commission, that it seems like there are a lot of similarities in what the groups are driving forward on. And so I think there are great opportunities over the next year for the Planning Commission to move forward with a number of items.
Okay. In terms of next meeting, I would like to put it on the agenda that we have a brief discussion regarding topics we want to talk about. We had talked, we had mentioned this a little while ago. If you guys can bring and have a discussion about what to talk about, not actually to talk about it, then I can work with Mr. Stotter so that, put out a actual agenda for the meeting of the 19th, and it covers things that we think, as a group, are important to address. I'll obviously have my own ideas, and Mr. Stotter's already sent me an email regarding his, and we'll comb that into an agenda. So just be prepared to say these are the things, I mean, I think I know a lot of them, since we've talked about them just as related to this council retreat, but if that's something you want to talk about next week, I'd like to be a specific agenda item, you know, 10, 15 minutes kind of thing.
Where is the next meeting?
Next meeting is March 5.
Yeah.
It's the first Monday in March. It's a relatively light agenda at the moment, with an update on the rollout of the capital bike share program here in the city. I do not want to steal the thunder of Ms. Odenino's presentation, but the project is moving forward, and we're still looking forward to a spring, depending on how you define it, rollout of the system here in the city.
Can we also, if that meeting remains kind of light during the Plan Director's report, can we get information on all of the development projects that are, you know, kind of in flux right now? Like Park and Lee, and Founders Row, and Insight, all of those? Because I'm continuing to get questions about various projects from neighbors. So I got Founders Row asked about again this weekend. So just, just like where they are, kind of thing. Because, and I know part of it is because you guys are in flux, but usually, we get like a, kind of a report on where all those things are, so it would be good to have.
Sure. And I know this is a topic that's come up for the group a couple of times this year, and you mentioned generally getting a regular report on those things. Is that something that would be helpful, just to have in writing, so that it's in the packet?
I think it is. If you look in past packets, and I don't, I had, we didn't want, I didn't want to push that while you guys are trying to move, but Mr. Snyder used to kind of give us a grid. So it would be like projects that are, like, at the staff review level, like, kind of what's going on, what's the time and looking like, things that, you know, maybe a section of things that we're going to be coming to as soon at first lead-in. It would just like, if you go back and look, you can find an example of them, or perhaps Mr. Snyder could provide an example of it. And also, it would just be kind of an overview of the highlights for the month. Like, it would be kind of, I don't think he would provide one at every meeting, but like, at the beginning of the month, just kind of big things that the planning department was doing. It gave us a really good snapshot of what was going on with staff. And also, you know, so sometimes it was really simple things, like changes made in the department for flow or something like, so we were aware of it.
Sure. Happy to bring those things up.
Yeah, exactly. But, and I think normally, it was like about a two or three pager at most. And for month to month, it was basically, things were moved up and down in the list, you know, the good, but you know how projects stay on there.
Things move forward, and then things move backward.
Right, exactly.
Yes. Hopefully, more steps forward than backward in any time period.
Well, you know how some of these projects are. They come forward, and then they go away, and then they come back, and, you know. And then some of it were things, too, like, like a project like the Lincoln might have on there that Target will occupy the space or open, you know, so it would be highlights of projects that we had been involved in long-term.
Right.
So we knew where they were.
Yeah, there's also a lot of stuff coming out of EDA that would pertain to-
And that's why I say, like, things would be on there for a couple of years, and like, the first, they would first be on there at staff review, and then they'd be on there, like, we're at work session level, and then we're, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Yeah, so it was kind of a nice run-in list, and I, I don't know if it was useful to the planning staff when that was going on, but I think it was kind of useful to all of us to know where we were.
Sure. Just if I could, obviously, I don't have the full report that we're talking about ready to go here, but I can say that the EDA is holding their retreat at their first meeting in March, and that the Target grand opening, and I think Ms. G already sent this out to the commission, but they are holding their grand opening on March 6.
And that's what came to mind, because I was thinking about that.
That's supposed to be a soft opening, as I understand.
There was a combination of soft opening and grand opening. I think the March 6 is the-
March 6.
Soft.
Okay.
That's what Jim Snyder said today at the Chamber of Commerce. He gave an overview.
Oh, wow, that's-
Yeah, I think there's a ribbon cutting and kind of a soft opening.
At 6 o'clock.
Yeah, the ribbon cutting's at 6.
6:00 PM?
Yeah, so it's like-
On the 6?
Yeah, so the whole event is like 5 to 9, right?
Yeah.
And the ribbon cutting's at 6. So basically, you could be at the ribbon cutting, then kind of walk around the store.
Then the EDA retreat will be up at Bigot.
Yeah.
You had attached some articles. Do you want to speak about that? I've read them, or did you just want to provide them? I don't know. You don't have to speak to them.
It's a follow-up to the speaker series at the last meeting with Andrea Rees from the Northern Virginia Conservation Trust. There were some questions about, questions, requests for further information on the mechanics of some of these things, like rights of first purchase and living estates or life trusts. And so, as well as transfer of development rights. And so the write-ups included some things about how those things work mechanically and the benefits to both sides in terms of how it protects people's property's interests as well as rights, but also allowing people to maintain control of their estates and establish a vision for how their property gets used moving forward.
Yeah, I found them really interesting to look at, and so, you know, examples of how you can do this. So I just kind of wonder, how does that, how do we take that and make it something functional? And is this like something that perhaps the Historical Commission and Harvard should be looking at first, and then maybe we look at, and the council looks like? I mean, is this not, I don't know if this is not really exactly a legislative ordinance change, but perhaps we could have a guide?
It's a tool.
A tool available, or a guide for people?
I do think there are a lot of different groups, and we heard it in the public speakers, the public comment tonight about sort of who takes the lead on different efforts within the city. I think this is one of the things we can talk about at the retreat, that the Planning Commission actually has a pretty broad-ranging set of authorities, that there are only, I think, three or four groups mentioned in the city charter, and the Planning Commission is one of them, and the Planning Commission also gets a nod in state code because of your role in planning for the future of the city, not also, not only planning it, but also making sure it gets implemented in terms of your reviews of plans, your recommendations on the capital improvement program. So I think the Planning Commission could be a lead group on restoring, certainly, natural stream corridors in the city, expanding access to parks and open space within the city. And I think life estates and rights of first purchase may be a positive way to move forward on those programs. So I think it could be a partnership with the Rec and Parks Board, but certainly, I think the Planning Commission could say, we have a long-range plan and goal. It's established in the, in the Parks Plan to restore these floodplains back to their natural working order. And these are tools that make that possible.
Yeah, because I was also wondering if, like, I was just looking at it from different ways, how you go forward, and, I mean, in some cases, some of these possibly should be action items in our comp plan, actually. You know, that we find ways to encourage some of this stuff to happen, to reach our goals.
Yes. And you raised the comp plan, and the comp plan is always a great document to create hooks that you can connect to later when there's an excellent opportunity to move a project forward. In the Parks for People Plan, it talks about reviewing the open space committee, the membership on it, and using that as a prelude to updating the open space acquisition map plan.
Is the open space committee actually operational right now?
Currently, the configuration of the open space committee is that it has the same membership as the Rec and Parks Advisory Board.
That's what I thought, but are they actually, like, are they meeting as the open space at times, or?
Only on an as-requested basis, and I think that was one of the things we identified. There was a lack of, I think there was seen as a lack of political support for some of the purchase recommendations that group has made. And one of the things we talked about during the comp plan update was expanding the membership as a way to also increase political desire. So if the group was reconstituted with membership from the Planning Commission, the Citizen Advisory Committee on Transportation, the Economic Development Authority, the Environmental Sustainability Council, the idea being then that if you've got membership from multiple groups, then you have a better sense of understanding that the recommendations are coming forward to support a range of issues. It might also be that then you've got seven groups making recommendation councils instead of one.
Okay.
Yeah, we were dissolved.
Yeah, well, I know, we were on it at one point. That was a long time ago.
For years.
And that's also an opening to talk about some of these things. I think one of the pressures that came out of the council retreat was that there seemed to be a lot of things that the city wants to achieve, but there aren't always funding resources to make those things happen. And so things like life estates and transfer of development rights, those are ways to get things with a minimal investment or, in a sense, no investment if you can transfer the cost to, to somebody else in the private market.[1769.62]